All right, and everyone here for coming out to this meeting. Madam Chair, would you please call the robe?
Sure. Roll call for this evening. Councilmember Raul, Councilmember Gomes present, Councilmember Willis present, Councilmember Gilyard present, Councilmember Jackson present, Councilmember Cleed present, Councilmember Baker present, also present is Mayor for the day Brendan Meadows and Mayor Bill Edwards. You have a quorum.
We will now have invocation by Pastor Lauren Henry, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us all stand, please. Let us pray. Oh God, we come with an attitude of gratitude, for we're reminded that a year ago tonight, one of our communities Chestnut Ridge was hit with a tornado. When we woke up the next morning, we heard the call for the city to come together, for the community to come together, for the leaders to come together. And together we started cleaning up and fixing up, and still we're together. So we thank you for reminding us that destiny has brought us all together for great moments, and whenever things come our way, then we're ready to take it as a challenge, to remind ourselves that together, we can do all things. This we pray, let us all say, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
Once again, thank you all for your attendance and for all your support. I'm going to move over to Mayor Bill.
That was a sure Brandon fact, but you ain't getting it. Once again, I really thank Brandon. Brandon is our first mayor of the day. He shadowed me for a full day, and now he has to open the meeting up. So let's give him another round of applause. Madam Chair.
Mayor and council, we have approval of the consent agenda. A, work session minutes from Tuesday, February 26th. Special call meeting minutes, March 2nd. Special call minutes, March 5th. Proclamation Gathering of Eagles Day, March 1st, 2019. Proclamation Black Business Month Appreciation Day, March 1st. Proclamation Nina J. Brown Rising Star Appreciation Day on March 10th. Proclamation National Beta Club Week, March 4th through the 8th. Proclamation to Reverend Dr. Gregory A. and First Lady Gail Sutton Day, March 10th. Proclamation Lionel Joseph Washington Senior Day, March 12th. Council approval for the city manager to execute a facility use agreement between the City of South Fulton and the Miracle League of South Fulton to provide recreational opportunities for children with disabilities to play Miracle League baseball. Council approval for the city manager to execute a disconnect agreement between the City of South Fulton and Georgia Power that authorizes the power committee to disconnect and replace all existing roadway lighting fixtures with LED light bulbs. Request for board appointments. Councilmember Raul has Ms. Tomasina Blunt-Roberts to the older American Board. Councilmember Gilyard, Ms. Patricia Lee to the older American Board. Councilmember Raul, Dr. Yolanda Wimberly, Business and Community Council. Councilmember Raul, Ms. Anita Bellinger to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Councilmember Raul, Ms. Giovanni Smith to Environmental Committee. Councilmember Raul, Mr. Aaron Julian to the Census Complete Count Committee. Councilmember Raul, Mr. Richard Scott, the Census Complete Count Committee. And Councilmember Raul, Ms. Avetta Hansen, also to the Census Complete Count Committee.
Mr. Mayor, we have some individuals, and I don't quite know how to handle this, that are being appointed to committees that have not been established yet. We don't have Parks and Recreation Committee working with the attorney on doing that. We haven't worked that committee yet, and we don't have a Business and Community Council yet.
Madam Chair, would you panel that? Where do we get those panels?
So actually, I think this is in respect to Councilwoman Raul's appointment at the advisory board, and I do, I have looked at your code, and you have, you do have an ordinance that has provisions in place. So if you want to tailor it, you have the ability to do that, but I think you have, and this is something that you adopted, goodness, a while back, but this is chapter three.
I think the question is, are they, have they been properly vetted?
So have they been properly vetted?
Established.
Yes, so the board has been established.
The board that she's talking about have been established?
No, my understanding is that she's only referring to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, is that correct?
Right, and we have not established that, that's what I'm working with you on.
No, you have established that through your Parks ordinance. I'll read it to you, it says, section 113001, it says, "A Parks and Recreation Advisory Board is created and shall consist of eight members," and then it has a subsection below that includes terms, qualifications.
The person whose record we pulled that and then approved the rest of, moved to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Proclamation move is second, any discussion? Are all of those in favor? That passes.
The next, we have approval of regular meeting agenda. But Mr. Mayor, I would like to say that item, proclamation recognizing Mr. Sam is being, he would like that moved to the April 9th meeting.
Mr. Sam?
Mr. Sam.
Seems.
Seems.
Okay. Was that on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, will you announce the regular agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Entertained a motion approved to the regular agenda.
I move that we, we move the city manager comments up to after the proclamations and recognitions.
Gotcha.
And amendment is recommended by the city clerk.
And what?
In addition to, amendment is recommended by the city clerk.
In addition to the amendment recommended by the city clerk.
With removal of the proclamation.
Which is removal of the proclamation.
Yeah, the city clerk just requested that you remove one of the proclamation items, so this would just be approving that.
Okay. Did I get a second? Did I get a second?
Second.
Okay.
And I would like to remove the Finance Committee. I'll bring it back, but I mean, whatever.
That's a discussion, man. She's in discussion. I got a motion, I'm in a discussion. I'm sorry. You move, you get a motion? Okay.
I want to look, I have a motion to remove the Finance Committee from the agenda, and I'll bring it back later.
Well, there's already a motion on the floor, so either Councilwoman Willis can include yours in her motion, or you can wait until we get to the item, and we can take what to it.
Mr. Mayor, I would say.
Hold on, hold on. Let me see, she's, she's here. Okay, let me get Mr. Baker.
Yes, I am.
Mr. Cleed, do you have a name?
Am I recognized, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you are.
Okay. I would like to, I would like to ask Councilwoman Willis if she's willing to allow our city manager's comments to come after public comment?
Yeah, that's what I said.
No, she said, right, after the comment.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I would like to, okay, I'll rescind my motion, I apologize. I would like to move the city manager's comment up on the agenda after the proclamation and recognition.
After public comments.
After public comments, I'm sorry. After public comments.
Second.
And to remove the proclamation as requested by the city clerk.
And to remove the proclamation as requested by the city clerk.
Second. Proclamation move is second, discussion, and if all goes in favor, that passes.
Yes. Okay. Now I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Madam Chair.
Next item is proclamations and recognitions. The first one is for proclamation recognizing Kayla Willis Day, Councilmember Edwards, I mean Mayor Edwards. And then we have recognizing Fire Chief David Walson Day, Councilmember Jackson and Baker.
I would like Mr. Willie Davidson, who's president of the Mayor's Committee of Education and Chairperson of that, come here, will you? All of those from the Mayor's Committee of Education. This is probably one of the best proclamations we have here within a long time. And what I'm about to read is something that every one of us in here should be proud of. One of the things I advise the mayor's task force of education was two things. Number one, we ain't political. And number two is, that we must start telling the story about our children. The ones who do exceptionally well, they never get the recognition. So let's start off tonight, telling the story about our children. Kayla Willis is an eighteen-year-old intelligent, ambitious, driven, funny, and persistent young woman, who is out to make a difference in the world and blaze a trail for others to follow. Kayla has always been a stubborn student, and has received recognition for numerous achievements. Principal Award, Sister of the Month, Talented and Gifted, National Beta Club, and many others. At Westlake High School, she is the International Baccalaureate, Diploma Magnet Program. A vigorous program that once completed, she would enter college with a sophomore's first classification, and was crowned Miss Magnet, Homecoming Queen. Kayla's a part of a blended family, and with the love and support of her father, mother, and stepfather, she has received amazing success. Kayla is co-founder of Going Against the Grain, a program that provides community service activities to members through various outreach programs. Kayla has received nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in scholarships. From thirty-one colleges and universities, included but not limited, Howard University, Dillard University, LSU, Mercy University, Spelman College. Kayla has decided to accept a full ride, E.M., I don't know if that made a thing, Crabbett Presidential Scholarship, to Fitz University. In Westlake, Tennessee, where Kayla ultimately goes to become a politician. You better talk to us when we leave. Oh, I forgot where I was. Desires to serve on the local level as mayor. I'll be gone. And then progress on to the federal level of government. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and council recognizes Kayla's accomplishments, acknowledge the love and support of the village, congratulate her for reaching beyond its borders, and do hereby proclaim to the March 4th, 2019, as Kayla Willis Day in the City of South Fulton.
I would just like to say that we are very, very proud of Kayla. Proud is an understatement, but we're extremely proud of her accomplishments, all that she's done throughout her years, and we always just tell her that hard work and determination will always prevail. So we just thank God for this blessing, and we thank God for the community for showing her the love and support, and just God bless each and every one of you.
While you compose yourself. Oh, Grandma here. Great-grandma here. I guess that's all, isn't it?
Brothers.
Brothers here, come on, we are. Ah, come on, everybody take a piece of this. All right, you compose yourself. I'm gonna let the chairman of the, of the task force, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the chair of the City of South Fulton Education Task Force, some of the things that we've talked about is that we want to make sure that we promote our students, and not only our students, but the schools that are within the city of South Fulton. It's important that we continue to tell our story, that our story is positive, that a lot of times we hear negative about our student, but this is a fine example of what students can do and what can be produced in the City of South Fulton. So on behalf of the mayor's task force, I just want to congratulate you for the outstanding job, and I know even though she's getting this, that all of our schools have great students, at Westlake, at Creekside, at Randolph, all of our schools have great students, and she is just an example epitomizing what we look forward to as it relates to education in the City of South Fulton.
You read that?
Hi, everyone, I'm Kayla. First off, I would like to thank God, because, you know, without Him, we would not all be here, and if you don't believe in God, I would like to thank whoever the higher being that you believe in. I would also like to thank my parents, because they have pushed me to succeed forever, starting off from, you know, being a little child to now. I would like to thank all of my friends and extended family members for also having my back, because seeing you here is tough, and it's hard to get a lot of the scholarship money if you're lazy, and they helped me, you know, not be lazy and push myself to be the best person that I can be, and to also help other people be well, you know, included. I've always tried to help other people, and it was getting to the point where I wasn't helping myself, and I didn't understand how to help other people without helping myself. But once I learned how to gain control of who I was, I was able to inspire many people that I could never think that I could show inspiration to. I have been getting positive feedback from mothers and sisters and pastors and even mayors about the stuff that I've done and how it's helped them become a better person. And throughout all of this craziness and everything that's happening, that's my number one goal. It's not for the fame or for the scholarship money, or to get accepted to any school, or to seem like I'm showing off, or to seem that I'm belittling other people. It's really to just show inspiration to everybody that I meet, everybody that I encounter with. And it's just a blessing that I can be able to continue this journey. I was not expecting to, I guess, blow up so young, but I'm glad that I did, because now I can take my platform and who I am today to be able to show the world that we don't have to live off hate and negativity all the time. We can thrive off of positivity, and we can thrive off of something that can, you know, help move someone. Today's day, the way society is today, we tend to focus on things that aren't bettering us as people, or that's not even bettering us as African-Americans, Caucasian-Americans, Asian-Americans, or even Hispanic-Americans. We all need to focus on the good and focus on the better, and I'm glad that I can get the recognition for a positive thing, and be able to be a shining light on the younger generation and even the older generation before me.
I'm going to continue, I'll go right now.
Well, I'm Councilwoman Gomes, and Westlake is in my district, and I am so proud of you. I hadn't even met you, but I was sharing your information all over the internet, because I want those positive stories to come out about our schools. And too often, we don't talk about what's happening. So I'm so proud of you. Continue what you're gonna do, keep preaching the good word, and show us out at this, because we're gonna be following you, okay? All right. And I challenge each and every one of you that are residents of the City of South Fulton, when you see things like this, make sure you tell people about it. Send it, do whatever, because our voices matter, and this is showing a product of our community, and we need to make sure that everyone knows what we're doing in South
Grandma, great-grandma. You know I got to give you tonight. Come on, honey.
I just cried. That's all I can say, I was so very proud, but I knew from a teen, we knew little girl, what I had, and what I had to work with, and I worked with it very hard, all of us did, really. And, and yeah. So I just want to thank the whole, everybody so much, because you don't know sometimes how much you do for children. Little bit of things you can say to them, but it holds, and it's thick, and it's tough.
All right.
I've been obsessed with Kayla from the time I found out Kayla was coming. She, she was my first granddaughter, and when she was about two, she was playing in my house, and she came over, and she grabbed my face, and she said, "Gigi, you wanna know why I was born?" And I said, "Yes, Mama, tell me why were you born?" I called Mama. I said, "Why were you born?" She said, "To make you happy." And I said, "To make me happy?" And she said, "Yes," and she jumped in, and when she got to the door, I said, "Well, Kayla, who told you to tell me that?" And she looked at me, she said, "God." And I said, "God told you that?" And she said, "Mm-hmm." And I said, "Okay, okay." And what, oh, what can I say? If God told her, then that's fine. And she has. I am immensely proud. I am overjoyed at her success, and I know that her brothers and sisters are going to follow in her footsteps. I love this girl beyond words, and I'm very proud of you, Mama.
Now, this comes up many times, because we've been looking on television, we've seen people paying for both of their kids. Millions of dollars for their children to go to college. And we got a shining example of hard work. Mama and Dad ain't got to pay nothing. But this overshadows all that niggas and stuff, you know, we got children that go working their way. You know, we not millionaires. We ain't paid by, we got good kids. Y'all gonna applaud for that, we got good kids. They're a big part of it. Thank you all so much.
Mayor, you got a picture?
Hold up, you gotta hold up, man. You got pictures? Go get your pictures. Come up there, great-grandma.
These pictures will be going in all my books.
There we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. Thanks, thanks to the proclamation recognizing Fire Chief David Walson.
Can you bring your family up with you? I'll talk as he's coming up. I went to the City of College Park, and they were having their black history month. And when I, because I was invited by David and his wife Sheila, these individuals are from the City of East St. Louis, and that's where I'm from, and I was like, okay, but he lives in the City of South Fulton. And I just did not, couldn't understand why we were not honoring this gentleman for black history. And the proclamation reads, and he, she, he lives in District 7, Councilmember Mark Baker's district, and as I read, City of South Fulton, whereas David Walson, a resident of the City of South Fulton, who currently lives in District 7, was the first African-American fire chief for the City of College Park. And whereas David Walson garnered more than thirty years of experience, training, and knowledge, twenty-five of those years were served in Fulton County, where he worked his way up the ranks. Additionally, he has over seventeen years of operational experience in fire prevention, hazmat, EMS, mass casualty events, and crash fire rescue. Whereas during his tenure in College Park, the first African-American female firefighter was hired under his leadership, and he was also instrumental in enhancing the training and efficiency of the EMS division, ensuring the division maintained industry standards. And whereas Chief Walton earned a B.S. degree in Fire and Safety Engineering Technology from the University of Cincinnati and is a graduate of the Carl Holmes Executive Development Institute and is N.I.I.M.S. command qualified. And whereas Chief Walton provided training and instruction to a variety of agencies, including but not limited to F.E.M.A., G.E.M.A., the National Fire Academy, and Fulton County Public Safety Center. And whereas Chief Walton is committed to community engagement and currently serves at Food Bank Distribution Centers and South Fulton Senior Services, to name a few. As the former board member and assistant coach for the Georgia Favorite Track Club. And whereas Chief Walton enjoys spending time with his wife Sheila for over forty-seven years. How long did you all date? Anyway, I'm gonna leave that call alone. And their grand and great grandchildren. Now therefore being resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of South Fulton congratulate Chief David Walton for his achievements and do by here proclaim Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, as Fire Chief David Walton Day in the city of South Fulton.
Good evening. I'd like to say that I am very proud to have been recognized by the city of South Fulton. I'm proud to have been a firefighter for the community of Fulton County because I started my career at Fulton County. I worked from John's Creek to Chattahoochee Hills, Fulton Industrial Airport, the whole span of Fulton County. Now, I must say that those accomplishments are a result of some people, some of them are here in the audience. I'd like to ask Chief Wade Elmore, Chief Kevin Harris, Chief, the present chief of the city of South Fulton, Jack Brother, to stand and just, for your audience, acknowledge, be acknowledged. And I also would like to do our pictures with appropriate attire. Come on up. Now, I must say that significant accomplishments is never achieved by one person. It's a whole network of people to make it all possible. And this is just a few. I tell you, one of the people who made it possible may not seem to be that important, but my barber, he kept me, he kept me looking, showed up and presented these pictures. And I thank, and I thank the community. I'm proud to be a part of this great community and thank you all for being present.
It's going in, we have one paper at home, the crusade. It's going in the crusade.
One. Bring it down. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
One, two, three? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Hello, can I have the Wolf Creek Elementary representative's approach? Once again, when our schools do well, we have to recognize them. And so I made it my goal this year to recognize all of the academic achievements of the schools that reside in District Three. And Wolf Creek is one of the elementary schools that reside in District Three. And I want to give them a proclamation for their academic achievements for twenty eighteen. We have to tell our story of our schools because nobody else is going to do so. So this is Principal Glass and I have, I met her, I made it my business to connect with all of the principals in my school once I got elected. And we have a very good relationship, I have a very good relationship with all of them. So city of South Fulton, whereas the Georgia Department of Education released twenty eighteen College and Career Readiness Performance Index, which is known as the C.C.R.P.I., which means schools and districts with a rated of one hundred point scale. Whereas twenty eighteen Wolf Creek Elementary Schools obtained a score of seventy-four point eight, which is a thirteen point six increase from last year and the second highest game on the C.C.R.P.I. in South Fulton County District. So not all of our schools are failing. Whereas Wolf Creek Elementary School has also demonstrated a significant increase in the Georgia Department of Education's twenty eighteen School Climate Star Rating, going from three stars to four stars. Whereas Wolf Creek Elementary School had fifty students inducted into the National Junior Beta Clubs with all A's. Wolf Creek Elementary was honored as a twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen National Beta School of Merit. Whereas Wolf Creek Elementary School is recognized as a leader in M.E.S. school, which is a program under Franklin Covey's Whole School Transformation Process, which has earned the school a seventy-five thousand dollar grant for a five-year implementation. And now, therefore being resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of South Fulton congratulate Wolf Creek Elementary School for their achievements on the C.C.R.P.I. and do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March nineteenth, twenty nineteen, as Wolf Creek Elementary School Day in the city of South Fulton, Georgia.
Good evening, everyone. We bring you greetings from the Wolf Creek family. We are in our third year of existence. We are one of the newest South Fulton County Elementary Schools. We're growing and we're doing great things over at Wolf Creek. We invite you out anytime to come and visit us. We have a career fair coming up this- Next Friday, that's my counselor, Ms. Thursday, next Friday. And we're looking for support from any of our community friends. Come out, tell the little ones about what you do every day for a living and encourage them to be like the young lady we just heard about at Westlake, graduating with all of those honors. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight and accept the proclamation.
Great job, a great job. You're the kind of teachers and schools that we need to hear about every day. And so I appreciate all that you do for the community and y'all told me to come out Friday and y'all cooked for me. I'm sure I heard that right. We'll be out there Friday, it's a colleague. But wonderful job, wonderful job to all of you. And I know you gotta get back to school tomorrow and continue to do the job, so. Thank you so much from the nation, from the over hundred thousand people in our city. We really appreciate you.
Right here. One, two, three, Mayor Edwards. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Mayor Edwards?
Next on the agenda is public comments. Speakers will be granted up to two minutes each and public comments will not exceed thirty minutes. Speakers will not be allowed to yield or donate their time to other speakers. We have a total of twenty-two.
Colleagues, there are twenty-three. We can either take the twenty-three or we can move on over to the thirty minutes or we cut down the chat. They never, they never are. Mayor Edwards, what you say?
The majority of them are on the same issue.
Yeah, but yeah, like I said, they did make the trap here. So we can, we can use the time or we can just go ahead and let the twenty-three go.
The residents are here.
I need, I need a, I'll make a motion if we do ninety seconds so everyone can be. Okay. The second, probably move the second. I'll go first. Okay, Mayor Edwards?
Minute and thirty.
Minute and thirty.
We said ninety-seven, you mean ninety-one.
Oh, minute and thirty.
Minute and thirty, all right, call first.
The first set is A.W. Davis, brand new Walt Fulton, Lula Gillum, James Brown, and Bobby Baker.
So we're starting by being first. My name is A.W. Davis, I'm there in District Four. The paper that I passed out to you all, I think the clerk's assistant passed it out. I'm not going to voice anything in regards to that. A system of habits, conditions, and events and actions that have to be taken at the federal level. And as soon as President Trump decides he wants to put the one trillion dollars that we need into infrastructure, you'll begin to see a change take place in your economic environment. At the local level, you're probably not going to have much to do with that, but at a federal level, it's very important. And it's important that we have your support as we try and initiate some type of an action that will give us a better understanding as where we are when it comes to infrastructure in America. We need that particular money, that one trillion dollars, we need to have that because each one of us endures on a daily basis some part of our infrastructure that's falling apart. The most important part of what I wanted to say to you is in regards to the idea of the airport. Everyone talks about the airport, but very few people ever reference the fact that only eighteen percent of-
Approximately twenty-four months ago, I approached Fulton County Schools for the Old Meadows, and that's a building next to Heritage Elementary. Heritage Elementary, which has about a seventy percent, um, they call it mobility rate, which is really another name for homelessness. And they were getting ready to demolish the building. I asked them if the N.W.A.C.P. and our agency, as well as fifteen other agencies, could have that building to put programs and services in there for the community. I spoke with mayor, with the mayor here, Phil Edwards, and I also spoke with Mayor Williams of Union City. He instructed me to go and talk to Councilwoman Jackson, Rosie Jackson, so that, because it was in her district, and I did that. And now, we've been kind of pushed out of the Meadows Building, and we want to come there and put some very needed services. So I'm asking, in the spirit of cooperation and also in the spirit of integrity, that we work in cooperation to try to put needed services in that community and not be pushed out of a concept that was ours in the first place.
James Brown.
Good evening, everyone. My name is James Brown, I'm in District Three, I live right down the street at South Fulton on Forest Downs Lane. And I'm here on a safety issue dealing with my, uh, community. Uh, I've been here nineteen years and I live on the same street. And the, the street used to be bumpy, humpy, humpy, and there should be a lot of speeders. And we couldn't let the kids come out and play on the street. Last week, they finally fixed that street. Now it feels like a limo speedway. Everybody's flying fast. And I'm basically here on concern for the kids and community. That we need to do something as far as the speed bumps, something that can get these folks in this neighborhood to slow down before someone kid actually gets injured. Uh, I don't even let my grandkids, my grandson play on the street. And they go up to here, they come around the corner, speeding. The, uh, speed sign, oh, they don't matter, twenty-five mile an hour does not matter. They add in thirty-five, forty-five every day. So I'm trying to find out what are procedures on getting speed bumps on them on the street before something actually happens. Thank you.
Bobby Baker. Bobby Baker. Okay, Vicki Ware. Carolyn Watkins. Reagan. Gibbon. Hallelujah Gibbon. And. Ma- Marceau Sales.
I am not Vicki, she wanted to, me to go first. I'm after, that's okay, that's fine. Hello, you may remember me, I've been here before. Carolyn Watkins, I live in District Four, um, but I'm here representing South Fulton Tennis Center today. And, um, if we could all just imagine that this wall was gone, this wall that we have is was clear, and we could see right across the way here, there's a beautiful tennis center. I don't know if you know where it's at, it's literally right across this little enclave here, uh, across the, the marsh. It's a beautiful tennis center that is literally crumbling beneath our feet. South Fulton Tennis Center, um, has twenty hard courts, four soft courts, and we play out of there in all weeks, all year long. We are literally going to have to stop playing out of there. Um, there are right now four courts available for play on the hardcore surface. It has been brought to my attention that there is a budget item that will allow us to fix some of our courts, so we may continue to play out of there. And it is now being discussed amongst you guys to move that money to another situ, to another project, okay? Um, I know this is a new city, I know there's a lot of things that need to be done in an urgent manner, a lot of fires to put out, but you know, we keep getting relegated to the less than. Um, our courts are not safe to play on. That's a beautiful facility that you brought back to life yourself, Mayor Edwards, just a few short years ago, that is now again crumbling. And I don't know what you're going to do with that building, it's going to literally sit empty. We are not going to be allowed to play tennis out of that center. Please don't move that money, thank you.
I'm Vicki Ware, um, and I am here for South Fulton Tennis.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Is that better? Okay. I'm Vicki Ware and, um, I'm here for, uh, South Fulton Tennis Center. And I'm just, uh, kind of just talking about the history. I've been there for thirty years, off and on playing tennis. And thirty years ago, you could go there, um, every single court was full on a Thursday. You could only have two courts each team. It was a great day, you'd see everybody you knew, um, and it's just, uh, we'd have drills on Friday and they'd have twenty people, uh, come and that would just be Thursdays, and there would be seniors, there would be business and a lot of tennis. And there's a lot of tennis to be played. And, um, it's sad to me to see that, you know, that we can't really play out of, uh, the tennis center, uh, right now. And there's a lot of teams that are looking for places to play. And, um, you know, we would like to see it, the courts get better so we can continue playing out there.
Thank you.
Really quick, this is the next person to approach the podium. Everyone here speaking on behalf of the tennis center, please stay put because I think the councilwoman that represents the area has moved our city manager's comments to public comments, this is what you guys can hear.
Reagan.
Hello, my name is Reagan Gibbon, thank you. I'm out of District Four, is where we reside. I'm a father of eight children and I represent the tennis center. Father of eight, I have five that participate at Fulton County Tennis Center. Uh, for me as a dad, that tennis center has done wonders for me and my family, opening doors for my children that I couldn't even walk through. They go places that I never dreamed of stepping into. All because of Coach Sam, Coach Sam Kennedy, and his tutelage from volunteers, from coaches, and things that they do. Everybody that I've heard speak tonight has been speaking about basically what I call a village. With eight children, you really have to have a village. People outside of me that can help raise my family as best they can. That tennis center has provided for my children from food, from clothing, from encouragement, from instruction, from things that if I was there twenty-four seven, I would get to my children, but I'm not. So it takes a mother stepping outside of herself to provide some, some, some pants for my children to play in, some shoes. It takes a, a, a dad to show my son how to hit that tennis ball the correct way. You got me? It takes all those things. And I understand we have some issues that, that need to be addressed at a, a, another facility, maybe dealing with safety issues. I'm with that. But let's find another way, a solution to get that done. Don't take money out of this tennis center for, it's helping people beyond what I could reach and what we could ever think. I know my time is up, but please put that on y'all's agenda.
Good evening, my name is Hallelujah Gibbon. And I'm on the excellence team at South Fulton Tennis Center under the leadership of Coach Sam Kennedy. The South Fulton Tennis Center has made a way for me to play tennis. It has allowed me to meet some awesome tennis players. It has also allowed me to travel to many different events and tournaments. There is a safety issue that needs to be addressed. We have cracked grounds on our court. We could fall and hurt ourselves. It also causes the ball not to bounce back when it hits the crack. All I ask is that, can please bring the money to South Fulton Tennis Center?
Um, hello, my name is Maia Sales, good evening. I'm twelve years old, I'm on the excellence team of South Fulton Tennis Center under the leadership of Coach Sam Kennedy. The South Fulton, sorry, the city of South Fulton Council should pitch in and repair the courts because someone could slip and fall by trying to get a ball due to how it bounced on the crack within our courts. So not only are we try, trying to repair the courts for aesthetic purposes, but for safety purposes as well. Also, not only does the tennis courts provide a space for us to practice every day at, it helps us young people stay out of trouble. So help keep us out of juvenile courts and moral tennis courts, thank you for your time.
Next, we have Michael Sales, Mackay Sales. Rachel Sales. Flash Power and Josiah Bult Lucas.
Um, hello, my name is Michael Sales. Good evening, my name is Michael Sales, I'm nine years old, and I am a member of the excellence team at the South Fulton Tennis Center under the leadership of Coach Sam Kennedy. I think that the cracks on the court are not safe because there is a lot of grass growing out of them. There are many implications if this business goes under. One, you will crush many children's dreams because schools such as Woodward Academy, Landmark Christian Academy, and my home school, H.W.C.A., are being affected in a bad way because this is where we practice and play most of our matches. Two, because this is a source of money for the city of South Fulton. The tennis center, this tennis center ha, has also provided recreation because I used to stay, stay in the home a lot. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Good evening. My name is Makai Sales, I am eleven years old. I'm on the excellence team at South Fulton Tennis Center under the leadership of Coach Sam Kennedy. I believe, I believe that the money should be used on South Fulton Tennis Center because in the cracks, the grass is growing, and when it rains, the grass grows even more. It should be repaired because after it rains, you could slip on the grass and fall in the cracks. If it goes away, it would take away the dreams of young and old tennis players. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm the mother of most of those children. My husband and I, a family of twelve, we have twelve children. And, um, I'm a homeschooler, we've always homeschooled, we have a homeschool network. And, um, my children actually go there throughout the week and practice. And the level of discipline and encouragement and just, uh, family that has come out of that place. We like to show up because, um, we're, we're actually noticing, they're coming back telling us, mom, you know, we scraped our knee today, we, and we're, we're hearing conversations where, um, people are pulling tournaments and all these different things because of the state of the courts. So we understand, um, the need and another facility, um, we don't knock that, we know that, uh, that it's, that it is a, a safety issue. Um, our main thing is that so is this. Uh, we don't want to relegate it to being an aesthetic situation where we're just fixing it up for cosmetic purposes, but it is a safety issue. So, um, as the children have said, please reconsider, um, and give the money that was originally allocated for the tennis centers. Um, we appreciate your time. Thank you so much for having us, and, um, we're big fans of South Fulton. Um, it was very impressive what we saw today, um, in terms of excellence, and that's what our family and this community is about. So, thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Josiah Lucas and I play for South Fulton. Hello, I'm Josiah, I play for South Fulton Tennis Center. And I've been playing there for three years and I love it there. I go there every day, I'm part of the homeschool program that they have, so I'm out there about four hours a day from Monday through Friday, on the weekends if you have a match. But courts are just not, they're not how they should be. You go to other facilities and it's a lot better, but I still love it, it's my home, it's my second home. I've cut myself a lot playing on the courts, like, on my knees, I have like six cuts on my left knee, like, one cut that I just got last week on my right, and it's just, it's slippery, it's the most slippery courts I've ever played on in my life. So, I mean, I would like to see it, you know, be played, so.
Felix Howard. Okay, Vanessa Walker. Malaya Walter. Tasha Perkport. Gary Kemp. Ms. Goins. And Cassandra Mitchell.
Good evening, my name is Vanessa Walker and I'm a part of District Three. And I would have to say, being a part of the city of South Fulton, I'm very elated to hear all of the excellent things going on in education, supporting our youth. So I'm here tonight to talk about our seniors. I would like to know what services that the city of South Fulton have or will be implementing for seniors. I'm very blessed to be here tonight with my ninety-two-year-old mother. I would like to know about Mills on Mills, Adult Daycares, um, and any other programs that we have for our seniors. Uh, my mother has lived a very fruitful life, still have many years to live, we pray, but I hope that our services in our city of South Fulton that my mother can be a part of. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Molly Walter. I am on the excellence team of South Fulton Tennis Center under the leadership of Coach Sam Kennedy. I think that our courts need repairing because there are cracks and somebody can easily get hurt. That happened to me once when I was in a tournament. On the clay course, the white lines and nails are coming off. I think this is dangerous to all tennis players because nobody has fixed the courts yet. I think they should have fixed the courts a long time ago for the kids and parents' safety. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, my name's Tiola Porch, I live at forty-seven ten Atlanta Speedway, formerly known as Jones Row, Fairwood, Georgia. What I'm here about tonight is, um, I know it's flooding. I know from the middle of the street and to, I think it's forty, on my property belongs to the county. The part that belongs to county, there's a long thing where water runs through. I have a video of the flooding, so I don't know what department I need to speak with about someone coming out and addressing it. But, um, I know the county can do something because I don't think I should be a conduit for the water that the county, that runs through that, um, cement thing, it's just awful. So if someone can, uh, my email address is on my card, if someone can let me know who I need to contact and let them see this video, we will, thank you.
Good evening, council, my name is Demaida Goins and I reside in District One, but I'm addressing concerns in District Three with, uh, South Fulton Tennis Center. I'm here along with my fellow teammates to employ comments council to proceed with the planning of funding the restoration of South Fulton. We understand that it is a multi-year project, however, it has to start somewhere. And so we are asking for it to proceed with the interrogation that, uh, other speakers have stated. Uh, there are reduction in courts which impact our year-round ability, uh, to play our scheduled matches. Um, I come before you as a mother, uh, of a tennis player, as well as, uh, someone who has played tennis for several years. And South Fulton is home to numerous teams that have proceeded, uh, to represent the city at Nationals, um, won city and, uh, state competitions. And so what we are only, are simply asking is that, uh, the pride that we show when we go to other locations in Atlanta, we would like to have courts that represent that same pride when we host those, uh, other teams when they come to, uh, our location. And so I appreciate your time and consideration, uh, as you proceed with decisioning this matter.
Good evening, I'm not here about the tennis court. My concern is about the, uh, leadership positions in the city. The positions in leadership of the city since its founding have had a lot of turnover, excessive turnover. And because success and failure come from the top of an organization, the city's turnover in leadership suggests an aptitude in its recruiting and retaining the top talent. My question is this, what changes are planned to improve the hiring and retention in the city of leadership, of top, of talent leadership to avoid apparent term turnover? Thank you.
Oh, I'm Gary Kemp, present District Two.
Ah, yes, I'm Cassandra Miles, on District Three and Four. I reside and assist with, uh, my cousins who have the twelve tennis, twenty tennis teams. And I grew up about thirty years ago playing tennis over at South Fulton when none of us really could get over there that much, you know what I'm saying? And so it has, uh, really gone down. The children really need an outlet. Tennis kept me out of trouble. It kept me to academics and it makes you disciplined. And I was able to graduate from University of Georgia, I was a great tennis player. But these children that I watched play, I gave them their first tennis racket, six of them, and they are excellent, all of them. They are top of the line. So the community needs recreation, they need an outlet for the children, and that's the most disciplined, academic, and it's beautiful, the whole program. The way Coach Sam takes care of the community like a village is something like I've never seen before. Also, I assist, uh, Ms. Vanessa with her mom. And we all need better senior programs in this area of South Fulton, I grew up here. And I would love to see more senior friendly programs, community centers, and just the beautification of our community overall. Thank you. Thank you.
That is all the comments.
All right, what we're gonna do is we're going, I think we bring up the management report before I do that, I'm sorry, but before I do that, I'm going to allow a nine-second, one of the person's business, my colleagues, who want to address this thing, so I'll probably just ask you nine seconds.
Good evening, I received an email in March of two thousand and eighteen in reference to the Meadows facility, and our intentions are to have a win-win situation at that facility. Ms. Gilliam, we spoke in Union City in passing, but we never had a meeting. However, I am open to your ideas and anything that you would like to say to add to it. We had a meeting yesterday with Fulton County, and senior services will be coming soon. So we're looking out for the entire city, we're trying to make this a win-win situation for all.
Let me just say something else, I encourage you all to have to do before the city manager report, because he will answer a lot of the questions and let you know where we are in his report. Okay, and let me get Mr. Baker, and then I'll get you.
Well, the gentleman who, I guess, addressed me by name, Mr. Brandon Fulton, a brand-new, you know, at the university together, he did speak with me, and I just wanted him to stay, but apparently he's gone, but if you can catch us on the stream, I would like to let him know that I did connect him with our city manager directly, and there were some requests made of him via our city manager in my presence, and I just wanted to direct our city manager to give him a brief synopsis of where he stands or whatever there is.
We got nine minutes, Mr. Baker, nine seconds.
If you could just allow him to say that part of your presentation to address.
Well, it's time, but it's very, thirty seconds, Mr.
Go right ahead.
Yes, thirty seconds on this, very quick. Mr. Fulton had some questions about the responsibilities of staff and to get an interpretation of his flood plan, and so we asked him to forward the actual documents that he wanted interpreted. After submitting them to me and coordinating with the solicitor, what we identified is that those documents had already been reviewed and staff had given a recommendation, but his legal counsel had actually asked that this be handled through that municipal court process, and as such, there was nothing further that staff could lawfully respond on because it's actually a legal matter. And so we believe that it's being handled, I think Mr. Fulton has a position that he has stated, and now it is up to the court system to actually rule on it. So I think that he's doing the right thing by presenting it, and we're doing the right thing by evaluating it, and then our court system will weigh in.
Okay, one more, one more, this, 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 first and nine, nine seconds.
I just had, I just have a question as to why I haven't been pulled into this conversation in this regards to the horse farm that's in my district, so I'm just, this is new to me, so I don't.
Well, no, it was after our meeting, she was asking a question, so I know your hand is up for her, right, so it was after our public meeting, and we were all there, he was in the vicinity, he was speaking to all of us as a collective, and I just directed it to Mr. Allen, so it wasn't disrespect, it was just courtesy, he was present.
And no action, and no action has occurred, it was simply Mr. Fulton was there after the meeting, he had a few questions, he felt as if people weren't responsible enough, so I asked him to just, the buck stops with me, provide me your information, and we'll make sure you get the response necessary. And so after responding, we found out that it's already in the hands of the courts, and those things are being evaluated between the solicitor and his lawyer, so there's no further staff action required, but the courts will weigh in on it soon, and we'll work with them hand in hand to come to a resolution if needed.
Okay, thank you all, thank you, so I'll go ahead, thank you.
Yes, senior services, I want to address, first of all, we're responsible as a city for municipal services. You all, we all pay Fulton County tax dollars, and they are responsible for senior services. And I agree, senior services does need to increase in the city of South Fulton, but what you all need to do is hold your commissioner responsible. I've talked with our commissioner, and I'm very, I've talked with him on a regular basis, and I have expressed to him that we do need a senior center in the city of South Fulton, in, on the south side of town. So we do need to talk with our commissioner, and we do need to encourage him to advocate for senior services. The Fulton County government is responsible for senior services. So please see my specialist, LaChandra, in the back, and she can give you their number, and she can look up the senior service number of the Fulton County. The other thing is, the tennis center, I am in one hundred percent agreement with you, I am interested to hear what the city manager has to say about the allocation of funds for our senior center. I know I have talked with the CFO, and the CFO has given me some ideas, and the CFO was not consulted about the reallocation of funds, he hasn't informed me of that, so I will make sure, I'm gonna listen, just like you all, I'm gonna listen to see what the city manager has to say, and if it's not in agreement with where I think it should be, I'll break a foul CFO.
All right, thank you all so much, Mr. Mayor.
I am excited to give this report, Mayor, and respond now to the concerns of our citizens, but also in collaboration with our teams, and I'd like to say that again because we are a team, one city, one voice, and one effort to make sure we move our city forward. And so in about thirty-two seconds, I will be celebrating my one-year anniversary of being sworn in as the city manager of this great city, so it is fitting to give this report at this time. And I think what's really exciting about that is I was just thinking about all of the news clippings that we've gotten in the past, and what we've gotten recently, and all of the ups and downs that we've endured, but I think one of the clippings that people often miss is that the city of South Fulton steps up. And this one year is a real example of that, because a year ago today, we had a tornado. In between that time, we've had a couple of other environmental issues, like water main break that just happened, the landfill fire, we've also had issues with facilities that have had delayed maintenance for decades. I actually remember that after looking at our array of facilities when I first started, no one had actually done an assessment of any of our facilities, and so we accepted kind of like quite a bit of problems that just hadn't been rectified. In addition to that, we had some challenges around the transition of public works, we also didn't know if we were going to be able to bring on our loss funding, and if our sanitation model had any shot of working. We identified we had mold issues at a variety of facilities, including a fire station and at Sandtown Recreation, I think it's important to kind of point those out, because those are health issues that you can't kind of kick down the road, even like the deferred maintenance issues, you gotta address those, because people access these facilities and want to make sure the folks that access them are extremely healthy. I know that in Councilmember Khalid's recent newsletter, he kind of highlighted and showed some of the pictures from the mold, really give people an idea of what's going on at our facility. We also still currently don't have some current permanent facilities, which we're kind of working to resolve, and have kind of amended those things temporarily, but those are some challenges. I remember before we got the great chief Meadows, we only had sixty-six sworn officers, and people were wondering if we could keep folks safe in our city, and questions from even our council member, Councilmember Willis, about our transparency. And so in every one of those areas, the city of South Fulton has stepped up, the mayor put together a task force so that we could put money into the FY nineteen budget around the tornado, but even before that, every single one of our council members pitched in to bring in public corporate and charitable dollars led by Councilmember Gil Yard to help rectify those concerns. Put pressure on Atlanta to make sure they're more responsive on the management of our water. On the landfill fire, which has been an issue on and off, it still is for over a decade, we finally got EPD to come to the table and step up and take on this state problem. When it comes to the facilities, we ordered assessments and allocated the first capital funds ever when it comes to our facilities to make sure we correct the problems that we've inherited. Our sanitation model, which was, you know, has had its ups and downs, initially had a twenty-five, twenty-five percent participation rate. Well, as of the end of last month, we have sixty-two point five percent of our residents already participating in the sanitation program, and we had not yet started to enforce it. With that, I mean, I'd like to highlight some of the effort of our council members, I know Councilmember Baker is having a sign-up effort in District Seven, and that will increase the number of people who are participating, because initially that was one of our lower participating districts. When it comes to permanent facilities, the council has stepped up and allocated funding so that we can take on a permanent police headquarters and move out of the dilapidated conditions that are coming forward. And when it comes to transparency, not only have we created a dashboard, and a three-one-one center, and twenty-four-seven call center, we also have expanded the city manager's report under the guidance of our council so that every single department in the area is covered, and our residents can go and find out any of their information at a drop of the hat. So I'm excited to hear about all of the great stories around South Fulton Tennis Center. I think that the concern around South Fulton Tennis Center is not only, you know, things that are valid, but very important. I tell you, somebody thirty years ago playing, learned the game of tennis by being able to play against my father, you know, probably the reason both of us have bad knees now because we were playing on not-so-good courts. But the reality is, is that the city is already stepping up to address this problem. And so while we have recommended moving some of those sixty thousand dollars to, and I think it would be disingenuous to say we haven't consulted with the CFO on the record, I'll call that out and say that is not true, that is completely false. But what I would also say is that the, under the leadership of Mr. Tony Phillips, he's in the back there, we've already started to pursue additional funding to really solve the problem. Sixty thousand dollars, anybody who plays tennis and has been to those courts knows you can't rebuild those courts off of sixty thousand dollars, and that's really how you fix it. So I think what the county did about three years ago was they resurfaced those courts, and so it's a temporary fix, and it's one that kind of helped it be playable. But what we want to do in the city of South Fulton is what we always do, and what we've proven we will do is excellence. And so what we are looking to do is rebuild those tennis courts. So we have been working with USTA on two separate funding opportunities from which we've already made it to the second step. The first is to put in your application, our application has already been approved and accepted, and now we're in the second phase where we'll be going through the technical specifications, which we're providing on filling those courts. And so the reconstruction of the courts, USTA is working with us to evaluate our need and provide funding up to a hundred thousand dollars, fifty percent of the total cost, whichever is greater. We've also partnered with USTA Southern Regional for a fifty percent max of thirty thousand dollars that would also assist with that so that we can rebuild the courts. Even further, I think we provided this to not only the South Fulton delegation, but also to our council, and under their leadership, we have looked at the hotel motel tax to be able to augment that. And so I think sometimes when we talk about these things, people compartmentalize them, and you don't look at hotel motel tax as this tool. But one of the greatest things that we can do, and I get all of you guys' emails, and that's the reason why we're making these moves, because the South Fulton Tennis Center could actually be a regional attraction, so that these three new hotels that we have coming online, people will have a place to stay when they come in and play tennis. And so what we are, will be proposing to the council is that a portion of that hotel motel tax be used to also revitalize those courts. So our focus is very much on the tennis courts, but you do in a new city have to prioritize, so is it better to have youth, like the ones I heard tonight, not be able to access a recreation center that may be in a different district, but is available to every single resident in our community, or is it better to handle all of these things and prioritize the emergency situation that you have to take on now, and then rebuild the courts permanently instead of continuing to put on a Band-Aid, which has been done for years? And so I think we believe the latter is the appropriate way to do it, and so we are petitioning our council to support that effort. There are also other great things happening, I think I mentioned the sanitation program, and I think the compliance as of, and that sixty-two, I'm sorry, sixty-three point two five percent compliance is actually prior to our February first twenty nineteen extended compliance date. That's pretty impressive, when we started off with only twenty percent of the people participating. And what we've also seen is that in the areas where people participate heavily, the illegal dumping or the right-of-way calls and maintenance calls have actually decreased as well. So we're really excited about that improvement, and also would like to applaud the council member for putting together a sign-up in his district, and hope that others do the same, because it's starting to have real results. I also say one other key thing about that is those infrastructure fees have actually come in at the tune of about forty-seven thousand dollars thus far, and so that is also helpful, because it will allow us to put more money into our roles in infrastructure, which I believe is not only important to our council, but also our residents, and so it's another exciting activity there. I would also like to highlight some key metrics before I close that are related to really the beautification and the infrastructure of our city. So now with us being the only place in the state of Georgia, and again, we're only, we're not yet two years old, but being the only place in the state of Georgia, and we're not yet two years old, as I said again, the only place in the state of Georgia that has a twenty-four-seven call center to really respond, non-emergency call center, to respond to citizen complaints, we are having some great results from making that investment. Our, it came online in January, and we had a hundred and fifty-five calls in month one. In month two, we had an increase of about six hundred percent of people using this tool, meaning eight hundred and thirty-five calls in February. What's really cool about that is we're in the beta stage of using that call center, and our goal is that we have, we answer every call within thirty seconds. And so in January, which we had a very short time to implement, no training for our call takers, very difficult month for us, it took about a minute and five seconds. But in February, that decreased down to forty-six seconds, and this month, we're trending at about thirty-four seconds, and it's only in its second month, so that means that people are not only using it, but we're being responsive. In addition to that, we have a goal, one of our KPIs, is that the average talk time is three minutes, meaning we solve your issue within three minutes. Well, in January, it took us about three minutes and forty-five seconds, which I believe is good for your first month, but that dropped in February to three minutes and thirty-four seconds. What also happened is that people were not abandoning the call without getting their proper response or their solution. And so our goal is for five percent, that's our goal after the beta stage. Well, in January, it was eleven percent, and in February, we actually met our KPI of five percent, so we're gonna probably drop it a little bit after the data comes in after quarter. What that means is that we are being not only responsive to our citizens, putting this innovative way for you to connect with your government, but our citizens are using it, and they're getting the responses that they need. So anybody who isn't using our call center, we would encourage you to do that. I think we also, you know, took some lumps over changing our public works model from the one that had been used by the county for a long period of time. Well, what has occurred is that we're seeing some really great results so far, even though we had a slow start. So of the actual two hundred and fifty-two service calls that have come through, or tickets that have come through Public Works, two hundred and forty-five of them were successfully completed within a five-day period, which is a ninety-seven percent success rate, and I believe that trends much higher than what was occurring in the county, although the county did do a quality job for us. In District Seven alone, there were one hundred and five work requests from January to March, and in twenty nineteen, we saw seventeen in March as we completed the winter right-of-way schedule, and all of those were completed at a ninety-nine percent clip within five days. I think that's very impressive, and I think it's a national model, and we'll actually I think that's very impressive, and I think it's a national model, and will actually be highlighted next Friday at the ASPA conference as people talk about these new innovative things that our council has put together to make sure that our residents get quality services. I think one area that we do have to look at, and we'll be working with the council in bringing, uh, some areas related to T-S plots forward, because there are contracts and agreements that the county has just provided to us this week. And so we'll be seeking, uh, approval for the city attorney to finalize those agreements, but bring them to the council so that we can continue projects and our capital projects won't go on hold. I think that's important because anybody who has seen how T-S plots has progressed will notice that projects are coming online much quicker now that the city has control of them, and we want to make sure that we continue that process. I'll definitely answer any questions that you have, but that concludes my report. I think the only thing that I would like to add is that on this one-year anniversary, I can tell you that we have not done everything right. We have not solved every problem, and there is an extremely long way to go. But I tell you, we've got one hell of a police chief. We've got a great economic development administrator. Our parks are turning around. We are having some excellent work with our planning and zoning. We now have our, our council is having a chance to really listen to their constituents and mold the future of land use in the city, which people have not had an opportunity to do at any other time in this region. And I really compel folks to have faith in your leaders because if you really take a step back and look at all of the challenges that we have had over the last year, I named ten of them for you, and I haven't hit them all. Our council has stepped up time and time again and made very difficult decisions. But if you look at them, they've been the right ones. I mean, no other city has put fifty thousand dollars in to be able to respond to the needs of our citizens when there are emergencies. You know, I haven't seen anybody put pressure on EPD successfully to step up. And, and their first offer, I think, was a hundred thousand. We got them to commit to half a million dollar. And, and that's just to get started. When we've had issues with facilities, those have gone on long before the city was incorporated. And our council, in their second year, put three million dollars in for facilities when we weren't sure what all of the problems were. This sanitation model, when people, you know, said that it wasn't the right, that the first one wasn't the right one, they found an alternative to really meet the needs of our citizens. And when we've been faced with issues that we didn't expect, every single time, there has been a response. And so I believe you have one of the more responsive governments in the region, but just like it took a while to, to get cityhood, it's going to take a while to become the best city that we, that we envision. But we are on our way, and we will not fail you. And so that concludes my report.
Uh, I, I was waiting here to find out what we're going to do about the funding that was allocated for fiscal nineteen for, for the Parks and Recreation. Are you saying that we're not going to reallocate those funds? You're, you're not recommending that we reallocate those funds? It will go as planned?
No, I stand on my recommendation, Councilmember.
Mister, uh, Malazi, can you please come up and address, if you don't mind there? So my question is, I met with, uh, Mister Malazi, the CFO. And he said you made this recommendation to reallocate funding, and you, and he had never seen that. He had never seen or heard of that recommendation. And he said there were other areas that we could get that money from, that it did not have to come. We did not have to reallocate that money.
Well, I'll tell you, I don't think that that's true, and I'm, I'm telling you that. So our CFO has met with the ACM and Parks, and they discussed this need previous to us bringing it forward to you. The recommendation was crafted on the operations side, yes, but the CFO, through my order, when the CFO still reported directly to me, was to meet with all department heads on a monthly basis. And so those things have been in place, and these issues have been brought forward. And so, yes, throughout that process, on multiple occasions, we have discussed the need to address the mold. And so as such, this recommendation came forth to council, and there was a consultation with the CFO and finance staff.
So Mister Malazi, have you ever had a conversation with Mister Oden?
No, not with Mister Donald, so that's an incorrect question. With staff, with, with city staff, that's appropriate. Mister Donald does not meet with everyone, but meeting with the ACM, meeting with the Parks Director, and meeting with the, uh, what do you call it, the Public Works Staff is the equivalent of meeting with Mister Donald.
No, it's not. You are responsible for what they do.
That is correct. And when my staff makes a recommendation after consulting with fiscal, and I believe it appropriate, then I bring it forward.
Mister Malazi, can you please report to this council and to these residents what you advise me about the money and the reallocation of funds for Parks?
So this is what I've said again and again, whether it's from the council, whether it's from the city manager, from the department head. If you have anything that is to do with finances, you are taking a decision, please consult with the CFO. You have the memo that came from the city manager for last meeting. In that memo, you saw who was copied. My name is not there. We may have discussed, but it was not up to the level that it has come to the, is coming to the council to take, uh, to take a stand. So please do check with the CFO so we can discuss where can we get the money. Remember, we are using a balanced budget. A balanced budget, that means at all the time, the ba, the budget has to balance. You change the priorities of things, and if you change, I am a financial person. We have taken call people. Taken call people who see, okay, according to this, now we can change this one. We can delay this one. We can defer this one. Or we don't have to do this one. We have to do this one. Therefore, it will be my job to say, okay, with this, there are these areas where you can move money. Other than moving the money, then the next thing you have to follow the money. And that was my presentation. Last time, I had to say, out of the balanced adopted budget, if you have anything above that, outside that, you have to borrow money. All the other things you have to move within where the priorities is.
So were you consulted at all about the reallocation of these funds from what the council decided to budget these funds for in fiscal eighteen?
We never came to the point of how do we, which one do we leave and which one do we, are we taking to? Where do we move money from to, to do what? There are several things that you would have done. I think the city manager himself recommended that we delay to buy our vehicles. We have about two hundred and sixty-something that we have not, up to now, we don't have. Uh, we have, uh, M, uh, LMI, that is the, uh, and we are required to have about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars as a local match. We have already received one million dollars from the state. I was checking with the Public Safety Director, uh, this afternoon. He says that money may not be spent this fiscal year, maybe up to September or October. So all those are areas where you can get some money. You can just move around. We don't have to postpone, but it depends on what priorities you have.
And so what I'm saying to you, Mister Mayor, and Mister Donald, is that I said, with the city manager, went line by line from the budget, and the CFO, the CFO, uh, recommended three different areas we could have pulled funding from. But he is saying, as the CFO of the city, money decisions are being made, and they are not running through him.
You just made one today where you, you are directing to get the, uh, about the twenty thousand dollars as the, uh, where maybe the city manager has to, uh, but you have not allocated where the money will come from. You have not even made where the money will come from.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, I would, I would tell you, so I, I would normally do these things differently. I would ask that we're allowed to bring both Mister Phillips and Miss Winfield. I think if the council knows, which our staff may not, that all operational activities flow through Assistant City Manager, who Parks and Recreation reports to. And so while I did not meet directly with Mister Malazi on this, the Assistant City Manager is fully authorized to operate those activities. And not only did they meet on it, but there, there's a monthly meeting that occurs on these activities. And so where the funds come from and how those things adjusted would happen through the mid-year budget modification, but that is a staff recommendation. But again, all of these things occur at the direction of the council. So I very much like to make sure we put that on the record and we clarify it, and we don't make these decisions as individual district pet projects, but things that are regarding the city. And so if there's any question as to whether there was a conversation, I believe that the, while he did not expressly say it, the CFO was clear. He kept saying, "To this level, to this level." There was clearly a conversation and some guidance provided, and so those recommendations rose to me, and I believe them appropriate to bring to the council. I stand by that, and I will continue to stand by that.
Okay, I'll let me do this. And a lot of times, Khalid, he's in the queue. We're right here. Follow up this one. So, uh, just briefly, for those of you who may be a little lost, we had a very intense conversation at the last meeting, a couple of hours around Parks Infrastructure. We are about to do a Parks Master Plan in twenty-twenty. So we are, uh, looking at redesigning our entire park system, which includes the tennis courts, which includes the buildings, which also includes our athletic associations and our programs. So I, I do want to say thank you, uh, Mister City Manager, that, that, uh, I think that that tax solution is brilliant. And, uh, it's just another example of how, when given just a little time, we really do come up with solutions here. Um, we may be sitting in a Fulton County building, but we are not your Fulton County official. It really does make a difference when you have city officials who live with you and suffer with you and, and use all of the same facilities that you are using. So we are really, we are really working hard on that. Um, there is a little recap at KhalidCares.com. You can see a video recap of that meeting. Also there, because I, I want to make sure we talk about that number, but every time we talk about it, I want to make sure that everyone has it, our twenty-four-hour non-emergency number. You can call for any reason, and they will route your request from your concerns to the right place. That number is four-seven-zero-five-five-two-four-three-one-one. That's four-seven-zero-five-five-two-four-three-one-one. We also have an app. It is amazing. You can download it for iPhone or Android. It's a See Click Fix app. You can take a picture of any problem in the city. It will also get routed to, uh, where it needs to go. And the, the best thing about both the number and the report, and, and you can find, uh, links to download those apps. You can also find those on the homepage at KhalidCares.com. But the, the best thing about those reports, the best thing about those, the, the number and the app is that they generate monthly reports. And that was going to be my, my follow-up question for you, Mister City Manager. I, I was told that at some point, we're going to start getting monthly reports of everyone who was making calls and using that app so that we can follow up as well. And that is in our package tonight. It's in our city manager's report. And so we'll get that once in a while.
Yes, it, as a part of the city manager's report, it is a part of that dashboard. And I think it, now, I think it breaks it down by district. So if you look at the last one, it actually not only gives you a breakdown of the calls, it gives you a breakdown of when they were rectified and how long it took to solve it.
Thank you. I, I was looking through that. I did not see that. And, and lastly, I would just say, when, when you do use that app, it will also give you updates, um, live updates about how that issue is being resolved. And it will also, if you wanted to, tell you about similar problems in that area, uh, to what you have already reported as a. It's See Click Fix. Uh, it's, you can just put in See Click Fix app, and you'll be able to download it, or you can get a link, like I said, directly from KhalidCares.com. Thank you.
Uh, Khalid, um, I have two more people. I'm going to close this out. We've spent a lot of time on this. I'm going to close this off with this, uh, Willis after this goes.
So, um, congratulations on your one-year anniversary, and thank you so much for that report. Um, I'm definitely in agreement with you that I do believe that the city of South Fulton is going to be one of the strongest cities in the state of Georgia. So we have a lot of work to do, but we are getting there. Um, I do have two questions, and one is in reference to the See Click Fix. Um, with the reports that have come in, how many, especially the illegal dumping? Do we have a way that we're tracking to see if they have been fined or those individuals are being found based on the home monitoring systems or cameras?
Yes, we do, but the, the process and our data has not, it's not enough data yet. So, you know, we've only put the call center and the app, and they're still kind of in beta phases, as I mentioned, but it's not been sixty days yet. And so what we are looking at, and, and I don't want to give too much information, but you know, we have the pilot program for the, uh, cameras as well. And so after a stated time, we will look at the different areas and compare both the, uh, video footage, the data from the dumping, uh, and all of those things, and our police and code, and I'm forgetting one other group, oh, and, uh, the municipal court, the, the court administrator will be looking at those items and kind of cross-reference them to bring those items to justice. So do we have a process? Yes. Do we have enough data and information to connect them currently? No, not yet.
Um, for the beta testing, for the See Click Fix, um, I was informed by a resident, of course, you know, when we find that there are neighbors that are dumping, um, that information is placed online. So I understand that some residents have been going on this app and placing the, I guess, defendants or whoever, uh, information out there, and it's being erased, and they had a concern about that.
Well, it's a private city issue that we have to, so PII personally identifies our information, so you're not supposed to distribute that through certain channels. And so we are working on a fix for some of those things so that people can discreetly. And so that's why we're in the beta phase, because some of these things, uh, we didn't think about, and other cities don't use them in the way that we are. Uh, we actually just, uh, did a, I don't know what you want to call it, a, a town hall with See Click Fix, and they highlighted us, Makin Bibb, and maybe somebody in California, I don't remember, about our innovative uses of the app. And so we're actually the only ones kind of using it the way we are. So that's a glitch that we've got to figure out how to allow this public tool to have a private submission, submittal process.
So I guess what I wanted to make sure Shubham is aware of is if you try to put your neighbor out there, that information is going to be taken down.
Yeah.
So, uh, be very discreet if you are trying to, um, you know, blast your neighbor or whoever information you have found, if they are caught in the illegal dumping. Um, we are developing some, uh, processes, as the city manager says, to address those, um, incidents. And that's what I really wanted to say, because I got a couple of phone calls in regards to that.
They can still report it through the tail, I mean, uh, through the three-one-one, I mean, it's not three-one-one. Our, uh, twenty-four-hour call line, for which Mister Khalid just provided that information, and then they can also, of course, call Public Works and submit that information directly.
Okay. And again, thank you.
Just thank you.
Last pick is Mister, uh, Mister Willis.
So nobody can be more happy than the person or persons who spent their time, money, and five years to help us get here. And I was one of those persons, and I'm very passionate about the city being the best city in the region. And I know that we can be the best city in the region because we were built out of self-determination. And so I do have a serious problem, though, that the CFO is being left out of the loop when it comes to money decisions. And I understand you're saying your staff, you're delegating stuff to your staff, but ultimately, this council, uh, is depending on you, Mister Donald. So while I do, uh, thank you for your year of service, I do have that concern. No decision should be made without the CFO in the loop. Secondly, um, without CFO telling me they're in the loop. And second, second of all, um, we, whilst your year anniversary, we're coming up on our two-year anniversary as a city. And I have been asking month after month after month, where, what are we going to do to commemorate that? And, okay, so when did that come?
You see it today.
Okay, because I, I asked you about it earlier, and it wasn't in our email.
You did, but you have it now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you so much.
Next item. Next item on the agenda is agreement, council approval of amended memorandum- council approval of amended memorandum of understanding between the city of South Fulton and Union City for use of municipal court facilities.
I will accept the motion. I'm going to make a motion to accept the memorandum of agreement of agreement so that we can just get the discussion created.
Second.
I'll be moving second discussion. Who's on the queue? Who's in the queue for discussion?
So, I'm sorry.
Who's in the queue for discussion?
This memorandum of understanding to...
All right, Councilor Willis.
Okay, so council approves the memorandum of understanding between the city of South Fulton and Union City for court services. So are they still requesting us to be out by June?
So pursuant to this agreement, my last understanding is that this agreement allows you to submit a request to extend it be, and this agreement actually does not end until July 31st, but it allows the city to submit a request, which Union City would then respond to within 20, 21 days, to extend this agreement for another term.
And so do we have any plans on what we're going to do? Because that's, that's, you know, are we going to have our new facility built out by July? That's not a lot of time. So what are we going to do if they're only going to give it up to July?
We should probably discuss that in executive session as it result, as it has to do with real estate. So you don't have an answer for that right now.
Okay, so they have increased the fees, correct?
Yes.
Okay, can you tell us what those fees, Mr. Malas, can you tell us what those fees are?
So these are the fees that are received from the services that we're providing.
Yes, so I know there wasn't an increase. Was it a 50% increase? Was it, what was the increase? What, what were we paying or what do they want us to pay us now, pay them now?
So the increase was almost more than 50% of what they're paying.
So doubled. So doubled. Okay, so what are we paying now on a monthly basis?
I don't have documentation. I can give you what they're paying now.
It should be 500. I know that pursuant to this agreement, you will pay 500 per month.
It's now they're charging per session, so it's more expensive than it was before.
So you've also cut your sessions in half, and you've also cut the personnel budget and the available positions within court. So we believe that you're, we are able to pay for it. But no, I would defer to the CFO as this is a legal issue.
Okay, so is there any way that you can give us by the next council meeting a full reporting of what we're paying for? Is there any way, I understand you have a documentation now, but by the 20th, can you give us a full reporting of what we're paying? And how often we're paying? Because from what I'm understanding, it's not monthly, it's every time we meet.
Yeah, at first it was a contract for a month, but now it's the time that we are meeting. We meet there, but at the same time that reduces the number of meetings.
Okay, and then in exec, executive session, Mr. Don, you're saying you want to tell us what we're going to do after, what the plan is for July, after July?
I'm saying that we should discuss this item in executive session versus a public forum.
All right. Mr. Khalid?
If it's the council's pleasure, we probably will take this until after that executive session. However, I do just want to make clear, the fees were raised by 50%, but then we've also cut the amount of times we use the building by 50%. So it might be a net zero increase. The, it's my understanding that we're only meeting there one day. Right now, court is meeting four days a week.
That would probably be the, we have the court administrator who's here, who can probably have better confirmation.
Jackson, could you come down and answer any questions related to the actual schedule related to the court?
Yeah, that's the director.
First of all, welcome.
Thank you. I'm a resident of South Fulton. Yes, just to clarify, we do meet four times a week. We utilize Union City once a week on Tuesdays. However, I would like to make a mention that I do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with Community Court. So we want to definitely put that in the fold that they may charge rent as well. The fees did increase 50%, so we're paying $500 per session. So it's not 5,000 a month, we're looking more like 2,000. The month of April will definitely have savings, as we will not be utilizing Union City at all the month of April. So there will definitely be some savings there. However, I still have the meeting tomorrow with Community Court, and I don't know what numbers they will be throwing at me.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Jackson. Oh, we got to go.
So I'll make a motion to table this until after.
Second.
Wait a minute, we already had a motion to draw.
We did?
Yes. It was your motion.
Oh, so I'm going to withdraw that motion now, making the motion.
All right, Mr. Conventary?
I'm going to withdraw my motion to approve the motion during discussion for that motion.
Yeah, you can withdraw your motion.
I'll withdraw it.
And then do a replacement.
Yes, and now I'm going to release that motion with a motion to table this.
I'll be moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Madam President?
The next item is a resolution. A resolution by the city of South Fulton, Georgia, setting forth a zoning and development moratorium pertaining to city districts 3 through 5, and for lawful purposes, other lawful purposes.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move to place a moratorium on District 3 for 30 days. That will give me an opportunity to meet with the planning and development director and also our, our attorney on how to restrict certain zoning purposes in District 3.
Just to do, let's just talk for 3 and 5. Let's do, who's 5?
3 through 5.
3 through 5, okay, I'm sorry.
I think 3 through 5, is everybody on the table? I think that's going to be the motion for 3 through 5.
Go over that, because we have a document that's on the floor. So is your motion to revise this document to, with subsection 8 to reflect? Right now, subsection 8 reflects the moratoriums districts 3 and 5, excluding 6, and excluding 4. So I guess, I guess for clarification, in what capacity would you like to amend this document that we have?
Well, I would like to amend the document to place a moratorium on 3 through 6 for 30 days. You know, 3 through 6, for 30 days. So that would give us an opportunity to meet with the planning director and you on how we need to update our current zoning ordinance for land uses.
Your second?
Okay, well, let me, let me clarify, because using the term moratorium is very general because there are specific things in here. Like, for example, your district and District 5 has a zoning moratorium. But District 4, which is the only other district that's included, does not have a zoning moratorium, but a moratorium that relates to development on CVP that's adjacent to agricultural. So it sounds like, if I could rephrase your motion, it sounds like that you would like to adopt this resolution, but to limit it to 30 days?
No, I don't want to, what, what, I have a moratorium on my district now on development, correct?
Correct, that extends, I believe, until the 27th of this month.
Okay, I want to extend it for 30 more days, just the way it is, until we have an opportunity to meet you and the community and development director on how I should restrict certain uses in District 3. And there's consensus amongst the council that they want to do the same thing.
So we're going to table the resolution that's on the floor tonight and then extend the previously adopted resolution for 30 days?
Yes. Okay, well she, okay, well let me, let me, let me make the motion. For District 3, because Naima will need to make her own separate motion. For District 3, for District 5, and District 6, we want to extend the current moratorium for 30 days that we have.
So extend it as written, with the exception that we make the, make the, the additional 30 days of the date.
Right, as written, as it is now. Because right now, there's no development that's allowed in District 3. No new development that's allowed in District 3.
Well, there's no new zoning request. So if someone wants to come in and have property rezoned to develop, it's not permitted.
That's the same thing. That's what I want. I want to extend that for the next 30 days until I have an opportunity to meet with you and the community and development director on how I need to restrict land use.
So do you have that as the motion, city clerk, not, sorry? The motion would be to extend the current moratorium that's on Districts 3...
3 through 5.
No, 3, 5, and 6. 3, 5, and 6 for 30 days.
Extend the moratorium for 30 days in Districts 3, 5, and 6.
And then she, she would need a second.
All right, second. Okay, are you still in discussion, Ms. Jackson, and then Ms. Killian?
I yield, Ms. Killian. There are two parts to that moratorium, the one that we, that we just previously discussed. The second part of that says, "In addition, there shall be a moratorium on the acceptance by city staff towards the commission of application and petition for group homes within District 3." That, I want to be added to that part again. I want District 4 to be added to that specific part, not the other part, but that part.
Well, how about this, can, can I suggest the, is it possible, since our existing moratorium is not ended until the 27th and you're meeting before then, so that we can have one document instead of a moratorium on two separate documents that relate to several districts? Can we discuss this between now and the next meeting and then present that on the agenda so that we can have just one document?
I think you're right, because this is confusing. I think Khalid said, yes, he said that you got all of the, every district having a moratorium. This is kind of stuff you're running into. So I think that if we held it and made it more clear, Madam Attorney, I think that that would help a lot, because I'm getting confused myself right now.
And then I would work with you to make sure that what you want to accomplish is accomplished before your moratorium expires.
Exactly.
So we need a motion to hold this.
I'm still...
There's still a motion on the floor, especially. So do I need to reset?
Did you make the motion?
I made the motion. And I just, I'm clear about what I want for District 3. And so, so are you saying, are you recommending to me that I rescind my motion and then you converse with? So that means my moratorium is still in effect that I currently have?
Right.
Yes, the moratorium is still in effect. The only reason I'm recommending rescinding is because it's going to be confusing on the zoning department as well as citizens to have separate moratoriums from respect to separate districts. So if we can finalize it, confirm it in one document, and then allow people to just refer back to that as to what the restrictions are, I think that would be more helpful for the zoning department and for the court.
Madam Mayor, do you, do you mind if I ask for Mr. Reed to come on? Because I just want to get...
I got, I got two questions.
Yeah, I, I need to got it. I don't want...
Let everybody speak and then we'll go for the next, Ms. Converse?
So also, so also in the resolution, it, it has stated that District 6 and District 2 will lift the moratorium. So my plans for District 2 is that we're lifting the moratorium. And I guess Councilman Khalid is changing his mind and saying that he wants it extended 30 days. So there's still some work that needs to be done based on this information. So I think the best thing would be to just table it and then bring it back forth with the recommendations. But I'm still in need of making sure that we lift the moratorium on District 2.
And right now, if you look at the bottom of...
Yes, it's there.
Okay.
It's there, but I'm just...
Make sure that's reflected on any supplement.
I just want it reflected and for the record to show that also it was for District 6. So we need to make sure that we change that, because it appears that he wants to extend it for 30 more days.
Okay, all right, Ms. Jackson?
And I'm hearing 30 days. I have a meeting April 25th with my community, so it's gonna, I'm asking you all to at least for 45 and 60 days. Because I, I need to meet with them, because they're the ones that asked for the moratorium.
At least 45. Excuse me, 45 years.
They're, they're saying 45.
So when we revise it before, before I even give it back to the clerk to put on the agenda for next Tuesday, I will, everyone who's impacted, I will confirm with you that the time...
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, Ms. Willis, your backup, we're going to hear with Mr. Khalid.
So, Mr....
Listen, Mayor, I'm, I'm asking that you allow Ms. Reed to come up and give her staff recognition, because some of us have met with her, and I just want to make sure that we are doing...
Well, I think that y'all are going to have individual meetings. I think that, again, she could be a part of those meetings. I think having it up here is going to confuse things. So if you'll allow me, we'll move on.
Yes.
Are you finished, Ms. Willis? Okay, Mr. Khalid, you're here to last beat.
I, I think that we're all clear now that we are meeting again next Tuesday. We'll be back here next Tuesday, and the moratorium does not expire until next Wednesday. So we will have time to work all of this out, okay?
So you would just need a motion to...
Send your motion.
To table this, to...
I'm going to rescind my motion.
Thank you.
Second.
To do what?
To place a moratorium on District 3, 2, 5, 3, 5.
Table it to me.
Well, you don't need permission to rescind, but it's...
I'm thinking about when she wants to table it, I need a date.
Yeah, so now you would need a motion to table it.
Give a motion to table that date, March 26th.
So I move to table this.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next meeting on March 26th, next week, too.
Second.
I'll be moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? That's good, ladies and gentlemen, let's move on.
We're going to move real quick, because I'm...
The next item is a mortgage.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to exclude the finance committee until later.
I'll be moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That carries unanimously. Madam President?
The next item is council approval to authorize the city manager to proceed with application and letter of matching funds for LEC-related grants.
I'm going to take a motion to LCI.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to proceed with the LCI grant application and letter.
I'll be moving second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Return to city manager. Chief, the chief financial officer has a report. Do you have a report? Okay, good. City manager, you've already done yours. Now, attorney, you want, you have to wait. Okay, well, let's do that.
I move that we adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and personnel and litigation.
I would like to amend, I'm second, amend that motion for executive session not to exceed 10:30 PM.
10:30 PM.
Second. Second.
I'll be moving second. Discussion. All those in favor? That passes. Make a motion to hold it in executive session.
Second.
I'll be moving second. In discussion. Hearing none. That passes. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
No, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the MOU with UE2.
A second. I'll be moving second. In discussion. All those in favor? In discussion, all those in favor? That passes?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
Second. I've removed the second to adjourn. Discussion, all those in favor? We're not adjourned. Out by 9:50. Thank you!